Now. What's that say? Hang on, I'll show you. Okay. Down here. See, right there. There you go, perfect. It's okay, yeah. Okay, now, that doesn't have to go away. We click on that, that's taken us out of the meeting. Well, you can click on it just to read it, but if you don't want to see it, just click on this up here. And then it'll be behind it. Just say, got it. Good, now this will bring it up. And that's pretty much all you need. So, okay, so it's ready?
Are we ready? Or no deal, or?
Got it on this. She went in there to check my shorts on.
Yeah.
We're ready.
All right, folks, we're, uh, we're gonna call this meeting over at six thirty-five, August twenty-fourth. Uh, just off the table invitation.
Good Lord, Father, we ask for your blessings on all of us here this evening. We're truly grateful to you for our inability to be involved in useful work of our city. We hope and pray for the wisdom to do the work that is beneficial for all of our citizens. We ask for your guidance in governing our city and to make decisions that will help in our efforts to move our city forward. May your wisdom and strength be present in all our endeavors. Father, please watch over us and keep us safe and healthy with all these things that you do. Amen.
Amen. Of what allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. See it elsewhere? Did you get anything? Nothing? Uh, citizen's input? No citizen's input? Uh, okay, we're gonna move on to the budget workshop. First up is the keep walking beautiful. It should be on your top page, your package, your desk. And it looks like there's one different, there's no proposed budget, is it? Last, uh?
That last, that last.
It's a lot there, so if the header's wrong, right?
Yeah, the header just had.
Okay, so y'all see that one program?
That'll be changed.
So, so basically, their cash in the bank is forty, forty-one eighty-two point ninety-two, and they're gonna carry over cash funds of four thousand. You're looking at income, which they do every spring, they have a big plant sale every year, and it does real well. It goes a long way. They're anticipating eight hundred dollars donations. They're expecting four hundred dollars in donations. They've got miscellaneous things coming out, I don't know what that, what that could be, but something outside of the norm, I'm sure. And then the fall plant sale, six hundred dollars. So, I guess they're having two, one in the spring, one in the fall, uh, as far as plant sale goes. So, the total income would be two thousand and a total figure of six thousand for the total income, plus the carrier that I mentioned earlier. Uh, as far as their expenses goes, the yard of the month contest, uh, they're looking at a hundred and fifty dollars. I guess that just entails the sign, is it really a cost for?
Yeah, they get a twenty-five dollar group card.
Oh, okay. That would make sense. And they've got signs and miscellaneous of eighteen hundred. I'm not sure what's, doesn't have any.
I can figure along that one. They also give like a big award, and they have a sign for it that they give to like businesses, and it's a big yearly award, it's a, it's a big deal. So, maybe that's why that's so much, I'm not sure.
No, the, that one right there, I don't know why, went away, but it was in there, that's the fall plant sale. That's what that is.
Oh, it's the expenses of the?
Down here.
So, so we're looking at four hundred dollars expenses and six hundred dollars income of the same, same.
Yeah. Is that five?
Doesn't. Uh, keep walking beautiful dudes, I'm assuming they're some statewide thing or something if they do.
Yes, they have to do that.
Okay. Uh, wildflower project, thirty dollars, and the welcome to West Milwaukee side project, which they, they've been working on this for, for some time, and I'm assuming that's how they got that twenty-five hundred, keeps carrying over.
Yeah.
No?
They, uh, down here at the bottom, she asked to put their excess that they are going to make out of this and carry it over for, because they do have a project that they're trying to save money for, and it will not, it's, they're trying to build it each year.
Okay, that's the two thousand for a dollar. Uh, any questions, comments, concerns? Nothing? Big daddy? All right, so you've got the proposed budget for the twenty-twenty-one. You look up top, guess the bank, the general fund service business deposit, general fund carryover, and the restricted funds of TDEM. Were you able to get an answer, is that part of this?
This, uh, no.
Is that related to the one you just did?
He said, no, it wasn't, not related to that. This right here, we'll have to do more research on and on spending. So, that's, that's something that I'll be getting from.
Well, we're talking about, folks, we had seventy-eight thousand one hundred dollars show up in our account. And, uh, so, of course, and that went into action to find out how, when, where, why this popped up in our account, and found out it was through the Texas Department of Emergency Management. We currently have paperwork and, uh, everything turned into DDEMs. From what we can see, most all cities are refusing some money, I guess due to the COVID crisis last year, and ours in particular is five hundred, I'm gonna round it out to five hundred thousand dollars for two years. And this one evidently is a carryover from last year. I know last year we got nineteen thousand, uh, in, uh, in, uh, in grant money for the help of the coronavirus, so I'm assuming that's what the rest is. Once and that gets a good answer on that, should be passing along. So, I was gonna touch on that. Okay, going down through there, does anybody have any, y'all have time to look at any of this stuff?
No.
So, nobody has?
Mayor?
Yeah.
I do, um, on one point five zero point one two seven sanitation franchise, sanitation.
Thank you, good luck, good catch.
Got more money.
That was the, that was the first one, but, um, I'll, I'll just, I'll just stay with everybody, and let y'all keep moving on there. That, on that page, that was all I had.
Okay. So, parking, we're moving it from five thousand for this past year's budget to two thousand this year.
Yeah, it could be more, it could be more, but, you know, we don't know because of the COVID.
I agree, and I would rather, I'd rather have it hit low than, than, than bring in more revenue, than it bring in more, uh, to bring it to budget more and bring in less. Especially because the bargain, we only got a few bits going, I don't know if we'll raise that much money, but we'll see. Also got a, uh, a, a police department funding grant, is that what we're paying on now? We're paying on that currently, or?
No, that's, that's a grant that they give every year.
Okay. Okay. The tax roll, uh, current, uh, this past year was three hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one. This year's proposed budget, and is this based on the included tax worksheet, the student taxation?
This is, um, our tax rate went down, but yet our value of our properties went up. So, it's, if you say maybe we get eighty percent of it, um, you know, it could be more than this. So, we are just kind of on the fence on if we're gonna get all of it collected.
So, you added the new tax rate, you reclassified the new tax rate, but then?
I just kinda estimated it.
Okay. Uh, delinquent taxes, uh? We actually, you know, last year we budgeted nineteen thousand.
Well, say, the, look at the actual column.
I, I know, that's what I looked at.
That's what we've already received up the first week of August.
So, the, or, or seeing, we, we budgeted for us to have nineteen thousand dollars of delinquent property taxes come in as revenue, but we actually, uh, realized twenty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars, which is good, uh, that's real good. So, moving on to sales using, uh, he sells the east tax for the city of a hundred, a hundred and twelve dollars, that's up from a hundred and five. No. There's another one we, oh, actually it's lower. No, we got more money last year. We had budgeted a hundred and five thousand dollars in taxes, and we realized a hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. So, that one twelve is probably a, a, a good estimation on that. The sales in East Texas, EC, uh, budgeted from fifty-nine thousand. Last year they measured it fifty-one, and actually brought in over fifty-four thousand dollars.
We made budget sixty thousand for them on their bill papers. That's what I budgeted, EC budgeted sixty thousand.
Oh, oh. We got it out. Uh, FDC franchise, eighty-eight thousand, can you explain what that is and that?
That is what they pay us, uh, the franchise for, for the cities, all of the sales that they have in the city. It's, it's a percentage that they, they pay us for the use of the lines here in our city.
Mm-hmm. They budgeted last year eighty-six thousand, we only brought in sixty-seven thousand.
But they, they pay at the end of the quarter.
Okay, okay, so this is not really actually finished out. Okay. Cell phone franchise, eighteen hundred, uh, mixed beverage tax, seventy-five hundred. Beer, liquor, wine.
Okay, so we budgeted more on, on the mixed beverage tax last year. But that's because of the, like, the liquor and, and the sale of, of that. And we've had a couple that have closed that are not.
Okay.
Hopefully the, hopefully they started, you know, and they will have revenue off of that. Right.
But you also, are you in a beer and liquor permit?
Beer and liquor permit, yeah, what this is, is the businesses, you know, the businesses that renew their permit, some of them are not every year, it's, you know, but used to, the police department would go and make sure their permits were at, were current, and when they would renew them, then we would get, uh, our fee off of it. Well, that hasn't happened this past year, so that'll be something that John, John will, you know, be able to help us.
Are you just feeling that, something? I'm having a hard time throwing anything at John, he didn't grab, he grabbed everything, throw it. Uh, let's see, I've moved on to, uh, building permits, we're looking at seventeen thousand five hundred versus last year's budget of fifteen thousand, uh, with an actual sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty. Then, that may end up being a low number too, because there's a lot of housing going on, there's a lot. Uh, homes being remodeled right now, refurbished from just sticks and stones up to really nice houses. Uh, then we got some new houses, they picked it up, I know twenty lots in Indian Oaks, that just totaled ninety-seven people's lives.
Any of these that y'all think that we are way out of line, I mean, that's.
Well, yeah, you know, it's hard to guess that, because I don't know when they're gonna, you know, like these new homes, the two, uh, several homes in Indian Oaks that just started, but by the time, by the time they appraise them, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be built yet, so they, they won't have an appraisal on until the next year. So, the only thing I can think of is that, oh, that would be the only thing that might be appraisable just after the first year, I think they started praising it January, February, March time, things like that. Maybe those of them will be, will be, uh?
We've got six down there.
Six, is it, okay. Uh? Uh?
Better.
What do y'all, y'all, what do y'all think?
I, I agree, Lou, you'll know if we come out better, we come out better.
See you later.
Figure something. Leveling it out, and we can go back and look.
So, you wanna leave it seventy-five?
I, I.
So, that's, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm giving it.
Skip to the vendor permit and the new homes and rentals.
Well, I'm just, I'm just not going through the, I mean, there's.
Okay.
I am skipping around a little bit, but there's, you know, if it's a hundred, two hundred dollars, I'm just kinda going through it for the sake of time and, and brief discussion.
I would like to go back to the new homes and rentals, what is that?
What is it?
The CO.
Oh, certificate of occupancy, yeah, that, that's all that is, just, uh, that's whenever they come file for a CO on a, on a home or a business, and, and, uh?
It's been low in, in the past because we haven't been, yeah, it's, it's going to, uh, you know, start picking up.
Yeah, that's one of, one of those things, we won't realize, I mean, once you get a CEO, you're moving now, so, and that, we're a little ways off of that.
But, so, my question on, I wanna back up, why does it have windows on there?
Because the, the same thing, if somebody vacates a house, and they move in, and it needs to be inspected, and it hasn't been doing that.
That's something I wanna raise a flag on and back up and start looking at, that might help some of our not so nice properties.
Yeah, because when they, that's kinda like, when they, when they move out, that's when you can tell them, you need to make it right.
That or it comes to the door.
Maybe, yeah, they normally, definitely like Chris, yeah, once you do that, the city has, okay, they're like, I need to turn it back.
Oh, it is.
We already have an inspection sheet set up of some kind. I'll visit with you on that, because that might help prolong some of the other stuff.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with you, Chris, Anna Net. And I think, I wanna add to that, these, all these permit fees and all this stuff that we're talking about, I feel like that we're probably good as well, I agree with that, for now. We won't really know until we have a code enforcement that is in operation. Our code enforcement is gonna help us really start being able to budget these items better than what we're able to right now. Right now, we're just sort of shooting in the dark. But code enforcement will greatly help us on a lot of this next year.
Well, and also, who, who, who can legally do that inspection?
Well, I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying your coding, I'm saying your code enforcement, Chris, because of your permits, right? Now, right now, code enforcement can drive and see somebody building a fence. Right now, our fence, our fence permits is three hundred, pools are two hundred, that could, that could, uh, who knows, quadruple or more next year, because now we're gonna actually be seeing those things.
Yeah.
Yeah. Moving along, uh, building permits, we did that, uh, electrical permits, uh, five thousand eight hundred. Last year was five thousand, we came up with forty-seven, forty-six. Uh, flooding sixty-five hundreds. Uh, we measured six last year, it came up about fifteen, so, all building permits. Uh, fence permits, uh, pool, uh, cover permits. Don't we, don't we, is, is the cover permit income a little low? I mean, are we really gonna hit that low level? Should we, I mean, should that never, should that never, we're gonna, we're budgeting a thousand dollars for cover permits for a whole year.
Yeah, well, we're like. We've only, they took sixty dollars last year in cover permits, so.
We don't normally typically get a lot, but I would imagine this next year.
It's gonna, it's gonna be more. How much?
My department, yeah.
Then, uh?
Um.
That'd be sixty bucks.
Sixty dollars, council, I mean, it's sixty dollars, and that probably was my permit.
Well, yeah. Well, what about pool permits, how much should we charge? Yeah, I'd have to pull the sheets, I'm not that.
So, what about the permit next year? It's like I say, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think the actuals are probably off on that one, because there's been a couple put in this year.
Yeah, you're right, I leave it out, three or four.
It wouldn't hurt to look at, to go onto the wrong.
I know, yours are, that's two right there.
Yeah, and next door to me.
That's one.
Yeah. Kevin, and then we know it's someone in down there where the new houses were going, so.
Indian Oaks.
Yeah. It, it, it's in banner position, or code, and.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's dry.
Yeah. They just got those.
And possibly two more.
So, if it goes down, I guess you just look in the book, I guess.
So, Chris, Chris, that was a good exercise, I think you just mentioned like seven or maybe eight, I, I, maybe I kept, kept, and that's not counting any real building going on. So, there's, to the mayor's point, that's probably low, because we're, we, you just counted almost eight, right? So, that almost eats up that whole budget right there. So, Mary, you're probably very right that we're low on that. If, if we know how many houses that people are talking about building, and, and some other things that are in the, in the works in the city, we probably are low on that.
Well, and you gotta think too, Indian Oaks, that your most probably be eight to ten, twelve, so, I think if it goes back to two thousand.
Two thousand.
That's what I'm. We'll go to the, the.
Let's go back to.
It'd be nice to see what the actual was, because it's gonna be awesome, really.
Okay. Occupancy permits, that four hundred, last year we had budgeted seven hundred, we realized two hundred, uh, as well as occupancy, bit, uh, permits for new businesses. Uh, oh, that wasn't four hundred, I'm sorry, that was, it was the occupancy program. Annual safety was what, is a thousand, and we budgeted last year twelve hundred and received nothing. Uh?
That's something, that's something, that's something.
Is that what we talked, the same thing we talked about the other day, last week?
Figuring out which one that'll follow, and we're gonna follow.
It says annual safety inspections, add inspections.
Okay, okay, add inspection, okay, look at re-inspections down below.
Okay.
Look at what we brought in, twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars.
I bought that.
Why, why that is so high is because we, that was for, that's where we put the first inspection along with the re-inspection. So, I wanted to separate it, that's why I put, add inspection.
That'd be nice to see it separated this.
So, you know, that's.
Does that make it easier on you?
That way, if y'all wanna know, okay, how many new houses have we had that we can keep, you know, track?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, that. We're still in the eight thousand. Accident, police support, so what?
If, if somebody has a wreck, or somebody has requests some kind of a, a report from the police department, that's what this is.
That's where they come down and pay to get a copy of the report.
Oh.
And I imagine it's twenty-five dollars, so there's only been one this year?
No, actually, it's five dollars.
Five dollars.
Oh, it is.
Okay.
And what about, um?
Copies?
This is just a general public coming in, getting copies, a lot of people come here to get copies.
They bring their own thing and work out? Megan, man?
That's it. Facts, it's.
Uh, clover, sand, and gravel, sorry, mowing, uh, proposed budget of a thousand. Uh, last year, we did twenty-five hundred, but somehow we go with a negative number.
We, we had a refund that would come out of that fund.
You paid us to mow? He didn't get it. Did you pay us to mow?
I don't know.
Probably. He would pay them out.
Again, this is something that, when you're code enforcement, you can get some money for it, because like, right now, all this, all down two seventy-six, not being, it's not mowed, you know, we can get them to pay for it, that's not.
Well, the state mows on either side of the highway.
But, like, like we have those lots, like, you and Indian Oaks, they're right up front.
Right.
So, the state would mow part of that lot, but the other part of the lot, belonging to some other people, should be mowing them, and we probably are beginning to happen to go mow them to get them better.
What about the, um, clover, sand, gravel?
Yeah, what is that?
That's, when we charge for permits, sometimes they don't wanna buy their permits, they want to buy them from the city, and the city.
Oh, that's right.
Uh, they will purchase them, and they will first stand in gravel to go on top of them, so that's what that is.
Yeah, it's been a while since we've actually, a customer came in and asked to install it.
And Steve used to install quite a few, but we hadn't done that in a long time.
Okay, return checks, these equipment sales, we've got budgeted, uh?
This is the tiger trailer.
Right.
And possibly, what'd we say, eleven thousand on that? And then maybe a thousand worth, just other knickknacks that we have around that could be sold from general fund, not from water suit. That's, we did not sell that last year, so we, we do need to go ahead and sell it.
We were gonna be diligent and do that, so, this year, I know we had lost a lot of hurdles this year, summer, we just couldn't, um, a lot of things hit us, we just, uh, you know, our product force has been very, literally very, trying to dig the way out, have a lot of problems, and I think that's what prevented us from getting that property, that real property ready for sale, up for sale, and all that. Um? Save up fees, I don't know what, how's the other thing?
That's if we are going to demolish a house or something, that's gonna be the client fees and whatever it goes, you're gonna have some expense.
Yeah. Municipal court.
Okay, what this is, is, John has figured that we're gonna bring in approximately eighty-five thousand for the fines and forty thousand for code violations.
That's awful great. That's a, that's a.
That's true.
That's reaching out there, are you really comfortable with that number? That's a lot of things to do, eh? I know there are, but, but turning that into a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, the, the magic trick, and, I mean, it just seems, based on the last year or two, not a, a fifteen thousand, so it's a little, a little, uh, exaggerated. As far as reality goes, because who'd ever brought in that amount on courts, on any court, whether it be municipal, or, or, um, traffic, whatever it is.
It says we brought in one twenty-four, oh, that was budgeted.
Yeah, it was budgeted.
So, do you wanna take it down?
I had faith in you.
World making is just, I mean, reality, you know?
Will you hire a court clerk?
Because we're gonna look at it, we can't do anything to, to get it.
Exactly.
I don't believe it, aspire, reach.
You all have any questions on that?
Man, can we hold it to it?
Yes, sir.
If, if one thing I've heard the chief say a few times before, and, and not to, not to kinda throw any pie in your face, but you were talking about what we've done in the past, he's, he's told me, and I've heard him tell other people, we don't do it the way we did in the past.
True, true, I agree with that, but, I mean, it's just, it's a strong, it's, it's bold, it's bold.
I think the only thing holding me back is employees, and at some point, people are gonna start wanting a job. There, it's ain't gonna last forever, so, once he gets employees, I have all the faith in the world in our police department, in our code department, that they'll get this done.
So, y'all wanna leave it at one fifteen?
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, okay, let's move on to the next one, which is warrants, old citations. We got budgeted seventeen five, last year we budgeted twenty thousand, and only brought fifteen hundred and fifty-four dollars. Uh, the year before that, we exceeded our budget of fourteen thousand, uh, but, so. Kim, what are you, what's your input on this? You, it seems like you're the ones that know the, uh, warrants and old citations and things like that.
If you get somebody in there that can actually really push the old citations and pound it hard.
You, you brought in some money that wouldn't have otherwise been brought in.
I mean, I think it would be.
Do you think that needs to stay the same, or more?
Probably.
I would probably say, maybe go fifteen, because, I mean, if you go over, that's great, but right now.
What y'all think?
If we go over, then it's for us, it's right.
Okay, what about, uh, bu- building security fund? And what else, eh?
That is the, uh, the fund that, that, the fund, that is the money that's brought in off the tickets, that is, that's beside. Tickets are broke out, it has the security fund, the tech fund, so much money goes to different places. And this, this is how much is from the security fund. And the security fund, that money, as you will see later in the budget, that money can be spent like what we have here for the security coming through this, and, you know, you can use it there.
Moving on to interest, is, then, then after bank, LS pool, what's the LS pool?
Uh, that's, um, loan star pool, we used to be, that needs to be removed, because we do not have that fund anymore.
They're on that.
Just, just, just mark out LS pool.
But the number stays.
The number stays the same.
Same, that's, that's the interest that we get off of the general fund checking.
Is that pretty consistent?
That, uh, well, last year, we had it break out to where it went, what was water sewer, went to water sewer, and what was general fund go, that's why that the number last year was so, so large, was, where it said six thousand for the budget, and we've only received a thousand and five. That's because we said it needs to be, you know, the officer said it needs to go to be fun, that it goes.
Okay, makes sense. Okay, other income, none?
This tech fee, this is what I was talking about, comes off the tickets, this is something that comes.
Okay. Contractor permit, that's the, that's the license for the new businesses in our city, correct? And that, that, that amount is fifty dollars?
No, it's, uh, seventy-five.
Seventy-five? And that is for new outside contractors to come in to build, or whatever, they have to, uh, sign up for, to be a contractor approved by the city, right?
Is that a yearly renewal, or is it one?
Yeah, yearly, yeah, yearly, but I don't know what, exactly what it's for, um. Uh, rezoning in various states, we've got twenty-four hundred budgeted, uh, last year we budgeted twenty-four, we got twenty-eight. As we, as we move along this year, I'm seeing a lot of, a lot of houses get re, uh, rehab. Um, I think, I think we're gonna come in or above this, this budget on rezoning in various cities. Just because there's a lot of activity going on in the city, whether it be new houses, existing homes that are gonna be remodeled and things like that, that's my thing, what I'm seeing. And, and, my own neighborhood and others alike, I mean, I've been around a lot of neighborhoods, and there's a lot going on.
Leave it at twenty-four, but one more year, and then we'll see just how much you, let's see what it does.
Y'all have that, that's amazing. Uh, specific use permits, um, we had budgeted six hundred last year, we budgeted nine hundred, and received none. Uh.
Looking at it.
This, this is rare, it may be something that somebody asked for something that would have to go to zoning, or a different, you know, reason.
We rarely do.
And, you know, so that's why, you know, we put something in there, but, um, and it just, it's three hundred dollars if they request it, so that would only, that would only be to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think of that.
Uh, gaming machine permits, twenty-five hundred? Look, that's what we've been bringing in, the number, number of machines we got, and I guess there's only three voices that have machines, is that correct? So, that's the only thing we, is that the only, um, income or stream of revenue that we get from the GSO, is the gaming machine that's, yeah, we don't get any other kind of revenue or anything like?
We used to get bingo tax, but we don't, they don't do that anymore.
And that's just, that broke down per business, per machine, or is it?
That, the gaming permit is per machine.
Per machine.
Mm-hmm. So, if they had more machines, it, it would increase.
Same, which up down there, Scotty's.
Child safety funds, what?
Do you know, who, who governs that? Is that kept here?
That, they get the permits from us, they, they come and, uh, fill out the application and tell us how many machines, and then we go and inspect to make sure that they do have those machines. And that's, that'd be part of, uh, John would have to do that as well.
And then we put a little decal or sticker on it, with the.
Okay, I was just, I didn't know if it was the county that, that keeps them accountable, or if it was us, that, that's kinda where I was going. Maybe that's, that's something that we could look at to make sure we're keeping everybody honest, I guess.
Well, yeah, it's been us for a while.
Yeah, she's in the, but, but you're saying another business just thinks they have it.
The circle K down there, they got one building right now that's full of storage stuff, I sent some of them back in there. I don't know, they were just often there somewhere through the years, but they're cleaned off, so, but, keep an eye, see if they put them in there somewhere.
Anything else, Karen? Okay. Uh.
Child safety funds?
Child safety fund, is that the fund that we're used to, uh, those in need of car seats and things like that? I mean, any car seats we do last year, this year, or whatever, this fiscal year?
I think I did five, I have a list in there, because I make them sign that they're in need, and have no means to give one. And I make them sign that they would seek the free seat. But I think there was five, but I still have some, if y'all know.
Okay. Uh, next, the fax fees, I guess that's the fees we've, uh, we've collected from people coming in, uh, off the street requesting something to be faxed. Um, bed registration, we got two hundred budgeted, the last year we had five hundred budgeted, and thirty dollars came in. Uh, do y'all want to leave this at two, uh, two hundred, or?
We, we never receive a lot of money off of this, not a lot of people register. And a lot of people don't have to pay, because they are either disabled, or, you know, over sixty-five.
I think they're a hundred and eighty.
Lower, do a lower to a hundred, y'all.
Yeah.
Internet contract, twelve hundred dollars, is that the internet contract we have with, uh, C I P?
Mm-hmm, yes, I pay a hundred dollars one.
Okay, and that's for them, I guess it's kinda like a franchise, do you, okay, okay. Um, admin fees.
These admin fees are for building plan inspections. And, and like I said, in the past, we have not been having these plans checked. And we got with Terry Williams, and Terry is going to, he has already come in and reviewed, what? Two, I know two homes, uh, and it's seventy-five dollars a piece when he does this. And we pay him fifty dollars, so, um, we're making something off of it, but if these houses start increasing, we're gonna have some funds off of this.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I agree. Um, someone live, where's that?
It's seventy-five dollars for the, for plan?
Mm-hmm.
And is that, can they make, do more than one house off of the plan, or do they have to do it for every house? Each plan, each plan has to pay that seventy-five dollars for it to be reviewed. And he's told me that that is very cheap, because other cities charge a whole lot more than we do. And then, didn't, didn't say on the.
Says it at the top, that's always charged with a hundred dollars for the review.
And then, I'll look at that sheet to make sure, but I know that, uh, we've only had two so far this year.
We got a lot to come, so I would leave, I'd leave it there.
So, are we requiring everyone that builds a home to, to submit a loan?
Yes, if it's a brand new home, we, we won't give any permits until the plans have been reviewed.
So, is that four thousand just for the twenty-five dollars we get per plan?
Well, actually, it's all of the money, but some of it you'll see in the other contractor fees paid back. So, this is going to be, that's not really all our money.
Uh, so, I'm looking for again, uh, there's no action?
No, we don't have anything to look back on, but they've had this line item in here for a while.
Yeah.
I mean, all the houses that are.
No, we've got two of them that we've reviewed right now, uh, and there were, but that may have been put in the building permit.
You said that was, that was under admin, did you, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, there's several being, about me now.
And how much, how much are they?
Sixteen bill.
Okay, I mean, I mean, uh.
So, that's.
How much is it, how much is it for inspection?
That, she said it's a hundred dollars. It's, I was wrong at one seventy-five.
So, you're looking at forty, forty? Forty units, I guess you call. Uh, I don't know, it's a major stuff, huh?
So, we, we can lower it, I, I didn't know what word to.
Well, what I did, I took four thousand, divided by a hundred, how much it cost, that comes up with forty.
If we had twenty-five homes, we could put it at twenty, we think maybe we're gonna have that many.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you wanna take it down to twenty-five hundred?
Kim, what are your thoughts?
Hey, Leon asked my question, and then you did the math, so that was the same things I was doing over here, so I agree. Um, you know, hate for us to hold ourselves to having forty houses. I think we've got a good projection of, of at least twenty-five, but. We don't know what weather's gonna do.
Twenty, come in with forty, then it's, then you say forty and go with twenty.
So, we can put in twenty and twenty-five?
Y'all are all between, because Al's not gonna finish these twenty houses, there may be some other buildings collectively.
Well, there's Garcia that's working on it.
Garcia's working on some too, yeah.
So, let's make it two thousand.
Make it ten thousand, let's watch our actuals this next year.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with that.
Yeah, the same guy that's building in Indian Oaks is the same guy that just built the six.
Al Schaefer or Garcia? Schaefer, okay.
So, do we know if he had those plans reviewed, though, there?
I don't, those, that was before me, so I don't.
Yeah, I.
I mean, it's, it's land or something, that's.
And now, this is four, I know that, I know that.
Well, now, I know the inspector has gone and inspected, but like I said, we were not charging the admin fees that were broke out like this, it was being included in the building permit, so. Can, can we ask the inspector to ask him to show the, the building permit, or the admin fee?
Well, they won't be able to, because it was added to the permit.
Yeah, it was, it was added to the permit on those that have, that have already been done, but the ones that he has now, he has an inspection, he gives us a, a sheet showing, okay, this one, this plan has been inspected. But before he gives that sheet, he has to see their building plan inspection, okay, or.
They won't have it, this is.
Yeah, so saying, look, move forward, we'll be able to see it.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, move forward, we might be able to see it, or he could say, I can't give you.
See, he keeps a notebook too, and he knows, okay, this one is, is fixing to be permitted. And so, he, he has a log that he keeps up with himself, our inspector does.
Yeah, but, so he'll know whether the, the admin thing has been paid before he does his inspection. Uh-huh, well, the permit won't be issued without that first, so, they're not going to, you know, that's why we had planned, they've been sitting here for several weeks, because, uh, they want reviewed. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure that was happening first.
Okay, uh, demo lien repayment, um, I'm assuming this is the, one of two houses that we have, that we put a lien on property after we, uh, demolished the house.
Yes, uh-huh.
We haven't, I haven't, we haven't done that in a few years, it seems like, two or three years. And we need to get back to it, because that's something the sanitation officials agreed to. And we need to get back to that, uh, there's, there's at least a couple, oh, two seventy-six is the one that needs to go. So, I mean, there's a lot that needs to go, but, uh, be a way to get back on that, and, uh, this is just, uh, uh, an estimate of what we would get back from the lien that we placed on the property. And I would, I wouldn't wanna go any further than, uh, I think we, I, I think we'd be overestimating that revenue, if we go any higher than that, what do y'all think?
Yeah, I think it's good.
I like it.
Um, grease trap inspections, who does, who's responsible?
That is, uh, the restaurant.
You?
Yeah, well, public works can inspect the grease trap.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm, and the last time that I remember us doing one was about four, five years ago. So, that's something I was gonna talk to y'all about getting back, because I'm gonna put a notice out to all restaurants that I will be doing inspections annually. And actually, T C Q requires, I think, at least twice a year, I gotta verify that.
Oh, yeah, it, it, it doesn't appear all the way back to. Oh, it, it, it doesn't appear all the way back to twenty nineteen.
Yeah, it's been four or five years, but what I'd like to know about that is what do we charge for that? Or is that just because I was just there?
It'd be a permit.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a permit. Yeah, that's wrong. Um, so what, do we wanna leave this at five hundred?
Till we really certify what permits are.
Okay.
Mayor, we should, we should have an ordinance that, that goes, that coincides with that grease trap inspection. So we would have to, we'd have to search our ordinance to see what our ordinance says about our grease traps. And then we follow that, because if it's, I hear Michael saying maybe it's six months or, or whatever. And if it is six months that T C Q requires, then that means we would need to change our ordinance. But we should have an ordinance that says something about our grease trap inspections.
Well, I do know that the state does have a hand in it, Kevin, because it affects our sewer, our sewer and collection system and it also affects the sewer plant. So if we're not doing inspections and they're dumping grease in our sewer lines, that's a massive issue.
Right, now, I know you're a hundred percent right, and, and I know the ordinance thing because I had to deal with it before.
Yeah.
So it should be in our ordinance, I'm sure, I'm sure we have it.
I would say so too.
So something's being done because the guy that bought buildings.
Yeah.
He, he, he stopped me one day begging for the county inspector information so that he could get his done. He was saying that it was being done by the county.
Well, I, I know that the city, Public Works, Water Sewer can do those inspections and should do those inspections because it affects our sewer plant.
I agree a hundred percent.
Which one looked at? I know T C Q has regulations on it as well, so.
Yeah, that's what he was saying, he couldn't get the health on it. Until he went.
County, because county does do it. But Rick has been coming to me and asking me certain things, you know, can the city do this? Because the county's not responding to me. You know, what do I need to do? So I'll give it that.
Okay, um, uh, then the police department donations, the two hundred fifty dollars. That's people that came in off the streets and had.
Uh-huh, Brandon had asked to put that in there last year because uh, you know, they would get donations every now and then for, for certain things.
Okay, uh, moving on to the Vision Emergency Management Code for overtime. Where nothing budgeted, total income, um.
That's gonna change.
Yeah, it's gonna change, what's the, what's the numbers? We, we massage the numbers, it all falls, falls into place. Right now, it's a eight hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. With the total income and the carryover, it comes up to nine hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. And that's gonna change, when, when, when we see that change?
I'll, I'll correct it tomorrow.
Moving on to municipal courts. Uh, municipal court, uh, quarterly court fees, what is that?
This is the money that uh, we get to keep. Um, actually, that's what, well, for the court fees, that's what we keep, how to, like, all the citations that are collected. I do monthly reports to the state, and that's our share. So this is under expense, this is what we pay the state? Yes.
So what do we get back out of, or is that any, um?
Usually it's less than what the state.
Uh, collection fees for five hundred dollars?
That's when we send, uh, send money off for a warrant, what is it, warrants and stuff like that? That goes to our collection company for the, for the fines.
What's a three-day-a-week person for?
Okay, that's, that's where we add in the part, this is the part-time person. Uh, and we, I'm anticipating four hours for one day and eight hours for two other days. So it'd be uh, twenty hours a week to start out with. We hope that John writes so many tickets that we have to uh, change that.
Now, you're only talking about me that, well, I'm gonna, I'm calling half people. Um, you're going to make it a half rather than one and a half people?
That, this is just court, this is court.
Oh, that's right.
The other one's going into water court.
So we're gonna start off with, with the workout.
And this other salaring, this is for Kim for the year.
And then, one, one, uh, five-two, this one-on-two?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, okay.
And overtime will be for mostly, which I didn't put it under admin because um, I am salaring now. But I put her overtime with her coming to meetings and stuff and whatever, you know, we have.
I don't see overtime. Oh, I see, well, I'm looking for the numbers, you know, the, the ledger number is that one, okay. Probably just moving down to see an issue now or. Okay, moving along, work up, um. Contract labor judge. That's we're paying, is that a thousand or twelve hundred we're paying judge?
I know, like, two, I know, two, two, two fifty a quarter.
Oh, is it two, two, two hundred fifty dollars a quarter?
Two seventy-five, yeah.
So is it thirty-six hundred? I'll use the contract labor, which could be in judge, so it's that, that thirty-six hundred, uh, budget is not all judge, right?
It is.
Did we say the judge?
The, the judge is the contract labor there.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure if the bailiff sometimes used to come out of that.
Two seventy-five quarters.
It didn't add the thirty-two hundred.
No, that's what I'm saying.
What's two seventy-five hundred twelve?
Oh, and you're saying a month?
Well, per court.
Oh, I thought you were saying quarter.
No, no, quarter.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
But the reason that it's all there is because sometimes he has two courts. So we have a jury trial, we'll have our regular report in a jury.
Okay, okay. Their legal fees, uh, seven, seven thousand dollar budget, exactly what does it cover, does it cover?
That's attorney, attorney's presence for court.
Our city attorney? Okay. And we did have a real slight increase on that, yes. This year, uh. Fakka, uh, seven, employment tax, Christmas bonus, a thousand. Um, a thousand dollars, as you.
That's not all me.
That's me, the judge, the other court clerk. Oh, we don't have the other court clerk in there. And, and normally, um, if somebody's part-time, we don't pay them the full five hundred, we pay them fifteen hundred. So it should be twelve fifty.
Linda, you just said we don't pay them the full five hundred, we pay them fifteen hundred?
No, no, two hundred, we pay them two fifty.
Okay.
So what's that, what do we need to raise that?
Yeah, I didn't know I said that.
But that's not what you need.
What do we need to raise that?
Did I say it right?
You said it what you said, but that's not what you meant.
You repeated what you said, but that's not what you meant.
All right, we're changing that to twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty, that must be a change too.
I would've said, no, I did not say that.
Got a recording.
We carried, we took it to twelve fifty, you said. Okay, next up is, uh, employee insurance. Next, uh, office was thirteen hundred. Um, gosh, I sure didn't need much last year. That's a hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
I think uh, it was, a lot of it was pulled out of, you know, other funds, so. Now, on the travel and training. This is for uh, Kim, for me, and for the judge, uh, for class. And if we.
Recertification.
If we have to go to uh, to the, for the hotel. Travel as well. And most of the time, it costs, what is it? Three hundred dollars, it's around three hundred dollars. And then if you have mileage, so it would make them out to the thousand dollars, because we don't furnish a vehicle for that.
Okay, um. Travel training, is, is that enough, thousand gonna be enough to get everybody to the classes? Just when you.
We, it may be like it has been this year, Zoom, you know?
Yeah, true, but assuming that it's not, that's not gonna cover uh, three people going to training. And as, assuming it's an overnight training, you know, you turn it, it's always one day or?
It's usually like on, for Kim and I, Kim and I normally can share, we go together and it's on Monday to Wednesday. And uh, we leave half-day Wednesday, so it's really only half-day Wednesday, but it's driving there and driving back.
Right, but, but that thousands, no, not terrible that much.
Well, we've been having it down for the last three years.
Well, it's just, because T M C C does, your hotels included with the cost of this.
All right, now, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Okay, dues and subscriptions, uh, what all is in, can recover, what all is?
No, what, what are those or these?
Uh, the judges, we get a, of T M C C does a, a quarterly report. Sorry, that's wrong, the state does a quarterly report, T M C C does a monthly newsletter that we pay for the, the clerks and the judge.
And also.
Yeah, the legislative session, handbooks and ten books, and any type, the new fee books.
Okay. Um. Saturation refunds.
Yeah, that's right, sometimes it oversells and take one that you're gonna shoot. So we give it back.
Let's try to be aggressive.
So, uh, the next one is liability slash property. Is that insurance payment liability?
That, that's liability, your, um, the court portion of the bill.
Um. The next one for uh, two thousand is the court, what's in the, in, in C B S?
It's for court building security fund expenses and travel.
And then training right after that. What all is that, is uh, is that part of what we were just talking about earlier, but?
Yes, uh, the, um. That's what we could spend on uh, training this in. For court technology and. And the, the first one is the building security, that's security, the next one is the tech. That could go towards, if she needed a upgrade on the computer in there, that could go towards that as well because that comes out of court.
I would like to see, you know, we were talking, we were backing up a little bit, we were talking about uh, part-time for that until uh, the tickets and citations start to roll in. I'd like to have somebody else training court besides two people. Because Kim's gonna be doing A R B, she's always gonna have time. If somebody takes a vacation, I don't wanna pull Kim out of A R B to do courts, I'd like, you, you know, this. I don't, I'm all for uh, cross-training, I want, I want more than one person to know the job. And uh, fortunately, you're a prime example of it. Fortunately, you were able to kill him and, and pick up where Susan left off. But had you not been, been around for that long and done some of these things, you'd be lost, we would, we wouldn't have anybody. So, I don't know what y'all think about it, but I think at least have a little more person certified to do courts, any identification, illness, whatever, uh, I just think cross-training is essential.
So we're gonna use this part-time person and train them or? Now, this part-time person, we need to change the travel, not, not travel. Yeah, we do, need to change the travel and training because they have to go to Austin for a full week for training to be certified to do that. So we didn't have, put that in there with this being a part-time person. And with it being a part-time person, we did not put uh, insurance in there as well.
Ah, yes. What do y'all think? Kevin, you any thoughts on that?
I mean, you're gonna have, we're gonna have to send them for training, so we're gonna have to have monies in there. Um, and I agree with you with the cross-training, which at the moment right now, for us to have somebody else certified, there's only one other person in the office to have that done, right? So, you know, I don't know if there's been any decisions made or, or thoughts about some of the candidates that have came in, but, you know. We just, we've got to make sure we have enough money in the budget to, to Annette's point, to get these people trained.
Well, I am trained, I am certified, that uh, but it's been a long time. But far as, far as being safe in a court, I do sit in with the judge and it normally takes, you know, the paperwork and stuff for the people that come to court. So, right now, we do have more than just one person, and we get this other person, we can train them. And if they, you know, are planning on staying, this is something they wanna do, then we, then we can increase it, you know? And we can increase it far as when our revenues comes in more too. The cost to become certified, that uh, for the first year, that five hundred?
Yeah, boot camp is five, but that's a whole week of hotel and class.
But you take, you have a class, dude.
Not for the first year. And then if, if, as you go along, you can get another certificate, but you have to have so much time and effort into it.
Ten years, that's pretty.
Should we run that to twenty-seven hundred thing? Um, we can, we can uh, or, what, let me see, what do we have it at? We've got it at a thousand. So if we put it to two thousand, you know, that would be an incentive for uh, training.
It's a travel training, one dot six four, dash one oh three?
Yeah.
And we're talking about moving it to what?
To two thousand.
And these other two down here for two thousand a piece, can that be, any of that be used up there?
That, that's uh, the security fund is for, strictly for security. And the tech fund is strictly for the operator of, of the computers and stuff like that and that.
Something, we're gonna increase that to two thousand. Okay, uh, going back down to, uh, I guess, county, county contractors?
What is that? It's a lot, I, I do not see where anything's been spent in the last two years, I don't know. No.
The only thing.
This could be something related to more.
If we had like a.
Uh, that might be what it is. Oh, okay.
If we had, if we arrested and sent them to county jail, the jail charges the city to house them. So that's what the county contracted.
I don't know, sixty-eight, so.
What was it the last time you met?
Raines County was the one that they had checked with the last time that I heard. So I don't know, maybe.
See, the last time the judge talked to me about it, seventy-five dollars a day.
It's what somebody else charges us to use the facilities.
So I guess we could call the county and ask them, right?
Yeah.
The house and prison.
Actually, the county does it too, they'll send uh, someone to another jail, like one that be at the uh, guard.
Yeah.
Be real serious, they, they sent into another county, so they run it the same thing, they, they do. Uh, computer repair maintenance, uh. Uh, computer repair maintenance, uh. Five hundred dollars enough for that? How do we look for computers in the house, what we got now, uh.
We've had two of them that have been upgraded, I'm not sure the last time court was.
Court two months ago.
Then uh.
Two or three months ago.
That was uh. I'm sorry. I don't know, he adds farther I this and that to them, so I don't know on on the computers. I do know that in mine, they were upgraded before last.
Are you running Windows ten? So is that what you think, is, I mean. It's five hundred, five hundred dollars to be, and why I understand doesn't last long.
But then again. Tech fund there.
Oh, okay, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, then uh. I'm not sure where Miss Lane, oh Miss Lane is is, uh.
That's just there.
So, okay, for this report total, we're looking at uh after expenditure, the name, yeah. Uh, two hundred and twenty one thousand. Moving on to administration. Uh, janitorial supplies are eight hundred dollars. What was it included, just like mops, buckets and soap and stuff like that or?
Toilet paper, bucket towels, um cleaning supplies, Fabries, something like that, round here at City Hall.
Okay.
So when you pay somebody to do this, where where did you come from?
This, um, I have a cleaning fund in here this year.
We've got them for free this time.
But that, this is just for somebody to come in and clean. Or City Hall and then for police department as well.
Years ago, y'all used to do that, huh? So, what's everybody think on the janitorial supply of expenditure?
Well, she thinks that's nothing.
Alright, I'm gonna praise them collection fees.
This is the tax, surprise all, it's collecting the funds for us, for our taxes.
Uh same thing with attorney fees and annexation, which we're not gonna have. Uh, they might have some annexation. Annexation is a different animal today than it was five, two years ago. No, used to, the city could force them, yeah, now they can't. Uh, are we gonna leave that same as well?
Yeah.
Election expense of fifty five hundred. That might be a little lower, but would you, did you find out the fee for that one?
That, they haven't given me anything other than.
Admin C secretary salary, sixty five.
But we said fifty.
Yeah, oh, that's him.
Uh admin assist, assist, a gas bill receivable, total of um. Twelve hundred forty eight hours, half of them now.
That is not there, there's, that's not there initially.
Oh, I see, I know, I see.
Overpay.
Where it should be overpaid, shouldn't it? Shouldn't it be in the court, oh, it's, no, I mean, not a season, um, I mean, it's. Where is it at then? Where's, where's, what happened to that?
And that's moved to Kim's position and then we have the part time person in court.
Okay. Uh, okay, we don't need uh for admin overtime, contract labor, city hall, seven hundred dollars. We're starting administration, um, pocket, uh. Five thousand dollars, merit increase slash bonus, Christmas bonus, is uh budgeted for five hundred. What, who, who was that included?
One person.
Okay, we're we're starting ready. There's only gonna be one person that's active.
That's me.
Well, I guess right here would be right now, we got heard it forward to A R, what, what are A R A P, where's it come from?
The court.
The A R E P?
That, where, that's where we have that salary, but she's still our court clerk, along with our A R I P.
I just, I just kinda figured it might be split between court and general fund. Uh, okay, um, employment tax, admin workers, uh. Boy, you know, travel, business travel slash mayor council. Uh, mayor councils, uh, employee benefits of five hundred. Uh, office supplies and software, thirty two hundred. What, what is that?
And legal pads.
Most of those guys, supplies. Is that, I've made software on.
Yes.
Didn't we just pay, didn't we just pay cops, eh?
No, that, well, we did, but we just had to pay quit books, uh we have to do an annual thing on that as well. Send process there and then, same like every other year, payroll, we have to do a payroll update.
Okay. Well, what's the zinc also, where is it?
It was charged on our credit card and.
Oh.
Yeah, I don't know what it is, my.
Or cheap where it gets the most, yeah, um, okay. Dues and subscriptions.
Okay, our uh T M L, we have to uh have, this is for uh. The dues for us to have, it's kinda like legal. And that's an annual thing, actually, it was eight hundred and twenty dollars a year.
Uh, travel and or training, admin and hours. Uh, telephone, thirty five hundred, cell phone, six hundred. Uh, is that telephone, is that the, all the cell phone goes to thirty nine?
That's, that is the majority, I don't think that is in any of the others, I think it's all coming out of there. For City Hall, for place.
We only got five phones. One, two.
Three.
Thirty, four, five, six.
Six on this side, how many?
I have one month.
Seven, how many can be that on there?
Two. Three? So we got ten.
Ten, ten one, I mean, ten times.
So. Uh, so still, that's thirty five, thirty.
Thirty dollars, thirty.
Thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars a piece, that's not bad.
Just look big when I first saw, uh moving on, cell post postage, uh budget twelve, uh twenty five hundred. We budgeted thirteen hundred last year and came away over budget, way, I was a thousand on it, but. I think the biggest contributor to that was the, the ice storm in February.
The, and we had a lot of planning, B and Z needs.
Yes. Yeah, and we, that. I say we leave that, that number alone. Because the, the B and Z, there may be some other things that we have to do going forward, uh the B and Z six, let me real easy. Uh, so, advertising, B and Z. B, B and Z, what's advertised, is that just?
And which uh it's, it's all.
Is that a barrier? Yeah, those.
Have them rezoned or whatever.
Okay, uh, what about the, um. This, you got utilities, twelve thousand dollars.
This City Hall, police department, the little building out there.
Twelve thousand dollars a game, right? Uh, okay, miscellaneous uh expense, office equipment and repair. Uh, thirty five hundred? Was this?
That, I, well, the um, our fax machine, our copier, um, machines like that. They're getting, they're getting pretty old.
The release though.
The, now the, they lace on the copier, yes.
The big one? So we're leased and everything but toner is included.
Yes.
Pay the toner. All the repairs, okay, mm-hmm. They have all, I guess, it's a cost of doing business. Uh, office, uh, process machine lease, that one here, general liability, uh. Property insurance, vehicle fuel mileage, why are we, we've not had any vehicle fuel mileage. What's the two hundred dollar for?
This would be if we have to, well, which a lot of stuff, it needs to be go to the courthouse to uh. Have it pub, not published, but have it posted in there in the uh, um, the clerk's office. And that would just be mileage unless, you know, somebody else was here to able to take it.
I guess you. Okay, building bank, the city hall, their budget thirty two hundred. Um, is this where we can uh add someone to uh come clean, sweep mop or?
Actually, the, the contract labor for City Hall, that twelve hundred on the front, that was the cleaning. That's uh John and I had figured a hundred dollars for his side, a hundred dollars for our side. Or two hundred dollars a month, we're, we're hoping we can get it done for that, just to come in and clean, mop. That uh, we're gonna put it out there and see what we can get, we don't know, we don't know what a cleaning service would be.
I'd at least do it every two weeks.
That, that would be nice, you know, but uh we're going to put it out there, it may be more than that. We haven't had, you know, an opportunity to, to contact anybody.
Okay, knowing that that's what that's for, you were only looking at monthly. I would recommend we back up and double that.
I agree, I, I just unmuted and I agree with you, Chris. I'm glad, I'm glad she started talking about that, we probably need to go back and double that.
Okay.
I think we all agree, our city.
Hundred point six, six point one oh seven, less payback.
Yeah. I think, I think we all agree, our city, oh, that's gonna have some, some love.
Especially knowing that this, the, the police department included.
No, no, V's got, V's got twelve hundred dollars in his.
Okay, okay.
So, uh, we'll probably need to increase it, if we're gonna, if they're, they come in here and they go sides. Or say two hundred dollars, uh, it's gonna be more like four hundred dollars a month, so.
Yeah, yeah, so yours are like one, six, six, dash one, seven.
Yeah, doubling that to twenty four hundred.
Yeah, I got it, I'm on. Uh, sitting back, we're moving up there, you know, building publishers, uh library appropriation.
Building, building maintenance.
Building maintenance, there you go.
This is um like air conditioners, uh, anything that breaks down in here, electrical. Uh, wiring, if we have to have something that's repaired in the building.
And as old, so we've only spent this last year fifteen hundred?
We had.
For the last time here.
We had the ACs, uh, well, as soon as it quits, we call, but you know, we don't have a service contract with them.
How old is that unit after?
Uh, it's pretty old.
It's pretty old.
It went out there and you had to replace that seven thousand dollar unit or something, where are you gonna get that money?
It's the, we only have thirty two hundred of it.
Well, sometimes Chase Grinner, sometimes he bills, bills us, bills us.
If it did go out, we would leave it good, I would think, if it was seven thousand a unit.
It's gonna go out sometime, it may not be next year, we just gotta go out sometime.
Thing under some kind of contract where it's being serviced, all that, at some point, it's gonna end up costing us. Yeah.
Where's the add on the roof? Y'all wanna double that or?
Well, I, I think, guys, it's hard for us to double that as far as, as far as if the unit goes out, now the maintenance. Annette, correct me if I'm wrong, there's gotta be some money somewhere else in our budget. That if we have something catastrophic will happen within our city, we can't have it in a line item for a maintenance, because. If you did that, you'd never be able to track it, because you'd have to have ten thousand dollars in there for five years until this thing went out. So, maintenance, this is, this is clearly a maintenance line item, not, not replaced.
Got you.
Well, the contingency down below would need to be increased, because, you know, we, we don't, we haven't been anticipating a major cost.
So we leave that, okay.
We'll leave it at thirty two hundred?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Your contingency.
Three hundred dollars, uh, we got uh six thousand letter appropriation. Twenty minutes, uh, what's A C C?
This is a Hunt County senior resources, they do not bill us until the end of, actually, we've only got the bill in September.
Is that that, um, senior resource center, they have watched every day?
That they come out here and uh deliver and.
Okay.
Yes, that's, that is uh from Hunt County.
I would like to back up a second to the library appropriation.
Yes, sir.
Can we increase that five hundred dollars to sixty five?
We already agreed, you know.
Well, now, that's, that's donation from the, the.
That's from the trash gun.
Oh.
With our five hundred, that would, that would put them up to seven thousand.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it was the, the trash.
And that, 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 they really do uh service our community.
Okay, I would suggest the same thing on the fire department workers.
A lot of people are using our library, like, you take, you go to look for jobs and things like that, and then they got open, you know, they've been closed. You know, a few last days during the week, it's a matter of opening back up, I think.
They pretty much have something going on up there every weekend for kids.
Yeah, they do.
They do, right, sir.
Alright, um. Let's keep it over the chairman membership fee, fire appropriation, we already said, uh, uh, tax collections. What's the, the expense of tax collection, is that uh, adware tax?
Um, this is for uh rent sale. This is uh the collections where they uh. They do the contract for collecting our, our taxes.
Uh, um, sharing bonds and very bonds, I wanna see.
This is uh, we have to be bonded, because we have, we handle money and in here and.
I wouldn't think of that.
Every other year, we have our notary, like, Kim's notary is coming up due and uh.
Okay.
Actually, you still have that?
I'm waiting on my.
Our contingency fund is where we said we wanted to whip on?
Yes, this would be for like a major something, so what do we wanna put in there? I mean, I know an air conditioner, that's gonna be seven thousand dollars.
I think ten thousand would be.
That's, that's what I was thinking.
Every square feet is this dog, right now?
I don't know.
I've measured it once, I'd have to find on paper.
Cause I'm sure Bob's gonna need to do this, probably.
But you know, there's two units here.
Yep.
There's, there's, there's units that's controlled right here, and there's units that's controlled for the other. This one I've noticed, like, today.
It's been hot in here.
It was hot in here, and it's still showing that it's seventy-three degrees.
And we're changing pretty regular.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Maybe in.
Take that to ten?
Yeah.
I think so.
The snow charred.
Uh. I just don't know what, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
I agree with, I agree with everybody, obviously, uh, I'm gonna shoot out of the. Transfer E D C funds, around fifty-nine thousand, uh, they budgeted last year fifty-one thousand, and came in, uh, twenty-seven dollar store.
Yeah, well, we said we, we budgeted, that we've been coming expenses of fifty-nine thousand, we just transferring it back out. And we, we.
Yeah, yes. Flags, pocketments, expense, would, would you consider brackets, they're the expense?
I, I put that, I put anything in there, and, you know, I mean, if the city decided to do something.
Point five and things like that.
Some kind of expense that wouldn't happen, the city would make that.
Didn't we use that, like, the last time we had a concert, we rented those point fives?
But, uh, it, so actually, it come out of the park, it was budgeting in. That, that presumably is separate.
We know the, uh, part of it's the T O R S.
This is retirement, this is, uh, and that is based off of the percentage, which is nine point three eight percent overall of salaries.
Hazardous waste? What, what was that, what, what hazardous waste?
Is that Hunt County, the, the company that, I thought it was more than that.
I'm not sure.
And I thought to, uh, use them to take, uh, you can, you can take.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Is there a water back there?
Uh.
I need to go back. Oh, it's brush.
There's not really.
And there's not.
A rock, my tent was sleeping back. The words.
Yeah.
Yes, I second that move.
Stop adding the.
Stop adding. Police Department, roads, all that.
Uh.
Stop echo.
Public domain.
My village.
I'm building it.
Management.
This is giving it, I was like, dude, give me the numbers from Danny, I want Danny.
I did, that was my question, has anybody done that?
I did, I, I said, I said, Chris mentioned it, but I don't know where he's at, and I knew I hadn't, so I did get ahold of him, and she sent me a proposal.
Good, good, but I can understand that, because I know you contacted as well.
That's what she said as well.
I will agree with you, Donald, public code. You're gonna stop, go. Uh, like, you're talking hazardous ways, or, what, what's, that's, that.
We're gonna have to find out.
Okay, so that, that's important. What about the web, uh, website administrator?
I, I spoke to Danny.
He did, okay, but doesn't. But that got the same.
And now, where it says website domain and.
There you go, there you go.
Uh, that one is set at two fifty, she said that's normally around two twenty, so let's leave it at two fifty, so that would, that would be what it would be.
What's a fifteen, oh, ours?
Okay, now, back up here, the website administrator?
Uh-huh.
She said that, uh, for our website, the size and, and everything that's on it, just to maintain it, she would charge five hundred dollars, and that's what the six thousand is, that would be.
Five hundred dollars a month?
Five hundred dollars a month.
What would pay her there?
Is she gonna make any improvements to that?
That's not counting her rate, she was.
That's just the late table we got.
She's gonna give us, so we would have to add another line in here to redo it, if that's.
That's where the cost comes in.
If that's feasible. Uh.
Like a redo, what we can.
Yeah, otherwise, you know, what we have, uh, that's what those are.
What we have is a problem.
It's, yeah, each problem.
So she gonna give you a bid on what's on cost to redo it, Dave?
Can't, I wonder if there's enough time to squeeze in this budget?
But that, she's gonna give it to me tomorrow, she, she told me she was having a proposal.
Yeah, cause I'd like to, I, I don't wanna start a new year off, paying a huge expense to rebuild a website. I mean, like, you know, the first week or two of the month, we can do the bill. Cause that's whenever we're going to the shortest, cause we don't have, they'll get taxes again.
But, we do have. So, that's, that's what I'm saying, we had less employees, we had less expenses, you know, insurance, every, going all the way down the line. So we do have some carryover that we can see.
That's a huge thing everybody has, uh, is the current website, so.
Will she be doing it, or will she be doing it through that company that she worked for now? That'd be a question. It's her?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I.
Yeah. She's here to do it. These are, they're, uh, salary, iris, we don't have any more iris.
I haven't got a change. I went back there this afternoon to find, find something, a contractor, something. I, I didn't find anything, so there's got to be something, maybe we can look back on the bills and contact them to find out, you know?
Well, they still hadn't told me that. I called them, who, where I was, who I was, everything, and they never, never called me.
That, that would, that would have helped me forest the roads, being able to get that information out there, if I could have approved on it.
Well, what I wanna know is, I wanna know, any people, I mean, what is that, fifteen, fifteen hundred cover? Does it cover up to two thousand, one thousand, or whatever? Do they charge us by the message that we send out? I need it all, that's a, Kim, I'm working.
Well, and I told them that.
I'm gonna push it, if it's these law, I'm gonna push.
I told them that, I would take it over, because if we have leaks, storms coming, things like that, I can get right on it, put the message out.
Oh, we.
I have an email, you know, all that, whatever it was. But I sent out, I'm full of water.
Yeah.
Yeah, I seen. I called the number and I was like, oh, well, it's not what we choose to do here, I know.
And I have a project to do that?
And she emailed me right away, gave me a new tax warrant, everything, get in, that's how you're gonna be able to save that money soon.
So you, cool. So it, it would be good, public works.
Right.
Police department, we got a wrecking, we got the road shut down, fire department, weather.
Yeah.
Just all around, any, any emergency stuff. Yeah.
Yeah, I, we had iris in Arkansas, and we loved it, because we were out in the country and, uh, televisions would go down, no matter what kind of television you had, you were taking war or something like.
Paid the fifteen hundred.
You know how many people, how many houses signed up for that?
Two hundred and eighty-three.
Cause one of ours, so, so third manager, not even that.
Yeah, not even that. But if they, if we advertise, yeah, it is our service.
And.
People will be down our way.
Well, we were paid for it.
No, I mean, it's, it's great.
That's great, that's great.
So somehow, no, we need to tie it to their water bill and just sign them up.
Is it listed on the website? We, we put it out on the.
Yeah.
Uh, you know.
They told it to y'all, they want, I don't really want to.
Every dollar of that, so.
No kind of energy, what's the next? It was on my screen, still, I don't really want to. And when they come in for news, so we have. I don't want to live.
It, it, it's increasing, because it was down at two twenty something, and now it's up to three, three.
Yeah, so.
Look at that.
That would have been dispatched.
Um, yeah, no kidding, so, so the website?
Rob, I already worked.
Iris was still looking at, right, Kim?
Yes, 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 I will.
Okay, by next week, well, maybe we'll have a method. I can tell, I can tell you, that's not something I needed done the air long, you know, you know, I don't want you to lose sight of what your main responsibility is. Um, also, uh, website domain, let me see, that's gonna be that, security system. Well, we've had this discussion before.
Security system, I look in the rest of this budget, and I don't see where police department has a line item, so this may be for city hall and police combined there, but, uh.
I would say that.
Well, I still need to get the information for that, we're talking about the securities again, I, I will give that for y'all, all right, quick. I didn't need to.
No, you found it. Uh, are y'all serious, wanna stock it, oh, it's eight fifteen?
Yes, sir, I've been working.
We've got, uh, we got, these ones, we got tomorrow, which tomorrow, we're gonna start off and do a small, short presentation.
No.
Thursday, Thursday, sorry, Thursday.
But tomorrow, we should be able to finish the events, and then Thursday, after the presentation, uh, we should, I should be able to have the corrected numbers and the final, and I will, I will correct the water sewer, and we'll have it, I don't think there's anything that we have to change on yet, but there'll be the changes we have to.
Okay. Uh, okay. We have six, seven. There, uh, Leon first, Robert second, all in favor? Leon nine.
Featherstone.
Where are you calling there?
Chris, okay.
There you go, yes, we are there.
Hey, thank y'all, I'm glad I got.
I'm sorry.
Keep sleeping better.
Glad you got sleepy.
Sorry, I couldn't be there.
Okay.
Okay, just Ian, Ian, and then it should come up.